Lunenburg Select Board, today is Tuesday, November 5th, and the polls are still open. So if you're watching this and you have not voted yet, stop watching and head on down to TC Passios and cast your ballot. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube Channel after the meeting. This meeting will be held, oops, not that paragraph, my bad. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin tonight with public comments. Are there any public comments from the Board?
Yes. Yeah, really briefly for those at home who are still paying attention. I made a public comment previously about checking your smoke detectors, so I just want to remind folks to do it. I know some people heard it, and you don't have to feel compelled to do things because it's suggested, but this is definitely the time of the year where we all hear about carbon monoxide poisoning in homes, boilers being off for the year. There could have been a lot of stuff that has affected the proper functioning of your furnace or boiler system. So just a reminder, to please check your smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, specifically the carbon monoxide detectors in your home. Make sure that they're working, so that way we can all safely get through this heating season. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the public service announcement. Are there any public comments from the public? Mr. Burden?
Yes, thank you. George Burden, 39, Cortland Circle. I would like to acknowledge and thank the zoning board of appeals for kind of a very disturbing and abusive appeal that was requested by the individual. It's a trustee of our HOA, our homeowners association, that has a shed on our common land behind his home, taking an eighth of an acre of land, maintaining it like his, very abusive, charged our family $20,000 for something that we didn't do, and basically was going to walk us out of our home and foreclose on us. I think the town should be very aware of this. They should look at the October 23rd Zoning Board of Appeals, and it's a situation where we have the trustee placing a shed on common land that was almost being protected by the town. The Zoning Board of Appeals did a great job. A very tough, kind of awkward, I'll call it, hearing, because there was a request made for an appeal without any basis to it, and there was actually an extension granted once, and then they tried to grant a second extension. Again, very abusive, but I wanted to thank the Zoning Board of Appeals for doing the right thing. Also wanted to bring up a situation. I know you guys have done some studies on Flat Hill Road. I was walking on Flat Hill Road on Sunday, but the same individual, I'll tell you, Mr. Pratt again, walking by me, drove by me going southbound direction. I was going southbound. He turned around in a driveway in the Old Apple Orchard, came back at me, held a phone, driving with one hand, holding a phone, pointed at me, looking at me, so not paying attention to the road, and saying, "Mr. Burden, it's 7:00," or whatever time it was, "is following me to my granddaughter's home." Please, the town, please, someone out walking on a Flat Hill Road being told that, it's nothing more than mental abuse, and it needs to stop. The individual then went past me, stopped in the road, got out of his car, and started continuously to film me while I went down Flat Hill Road the opposite way. Again, walking, he's in his car, two cars came up. They stopped, started talking to him, and you could see that the... I couldn't hear the whole conversation, but the conversation got very loud from Mr. Pratt, telling him he can basically do what he wants, and so what he was telling these individuals. I have it all on recording. It's pathetic. The town used to stop, and the police officers won't even take... They wouldn't even take a report from me and my wife the week before with very similar situation. We had an officer drive away honestly from us when we wanted to report these things. Kind of disturbing to us, but wanted to let the town know what we're going through, and that hope this stops in Lunenburg. It needs to. It shouldn't be in this small little town, but we're going to get to the bottom of it, and we're going to get... And everybody's heard me before. We're going to continue to get to the bottom of this harassment that we've gone through. It's unbelievable, and it's... These are things that can't even be made up. This is for TV shows, not for real life, especially in a small town of Lunenburg. I'll leave it at that, and we'll be tuned in another time.
All right. Thank you for your public comment, Mr. Burden. Are there any other public comments? I'm not seeing anyone else on Zoom. All right, announcements. I do have an announcement. Well, the first one, I'll plug again. I don't know if I mentioned it at the beginning of the meeting, but polls are still open, and they close at 8:00 PM. So you have, what time is it now? 55 more minutes to go and vote, if you haven't yet. And the other one that I have to make is... So the warrant that was sent out for the special town meeting contained some votes that were captured incorrectly. So I just want to go through the ones that were incorrect in the booklet and to just provide the correct votes. And we'll also be making sure that we communicate this at town meeting as well, and we'll have printouts for everyone as well, so that they can reference the actual correct votes. So in Article 5 in the warrant, it states that the FINCOM voted 4 to 1, four in favor and one opposed. The actual vote was 4-0-1, so one member abstained from that vote instead of voting against it. Similarly, for Article 6, same exact situation. It's recorded as the FINCOM voted 4-1. The actual vote was 4-0-1. For Article 9, same thing, FINCOM 4-1. It should actually be 4-0-1. And then for Article 11, it states that the Select Board voted 4-1. The actual vote was 3-1-1. So instead of one in favor, it was one abstention. So instead of 4-1, it was 3-1-1. All right. Are there any other announcements? All right. We'll move on to communications from other boards. I do believe we have one tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Kate Burnham, Superintendent of Schools here on behalf of the school committee, shared with the interim town manager and the Chair a list of projects that largely come from our capital plan, our 10-year capital plan. These are projects that would not require bid. So as the Board is deliberating over what to do with any available ARPA money, that's a list for your consideration. It's a list that the school committee will discuss at tomorrow night's meeting. I may have more feedback for you after they have an opportunity to discuss. They may have other thoughts as well. But I wanted to make sure that you had access to this memo that they'll be looking at tomorrow night and discussing.
Thank you, Kate. Can I just ask you for a favor? So they're on the table right behind you. Would you mind handing them up real quick? Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Thanks, Kate.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. So we'll be talking about that when we get to ARPA, because it looks like we're going to have quite a bit that we have to reallocate. So we have our emergency list of easy purchases from department heads, and this is one. So those are all the school department requests, but we'll get into that when we get to ARPA. All right. We don't have any hearings or meetings tonight, so we'll jump down to appointments, ratifications, and resignations. So we have the ratification of the town manager's appointment of Robin Nano as administrative assistant for the Board of Assessors. So I'll hand it over to you, Carter, to introduce Robin.
I don't think I can do anything better than what Julie Bellevue prepared in the package.
All right. I'll pull it up. We are pleased to announce for ratification the appointment of Robin Nano. Robin has an extensive background in home and auto insurance, as well as a banking background. Her knowledge of the registry process will be helpful with motor vehicle excise abatements, as well as her financial background. She is eager to join our team, and will be doing so on Tuesday, November 11th, pending our ratification. Robin's references describe her as someone they can count on, reliable, supportive, honest, and a people person. These attributes were noticeable during Robin's interview with the principal assessor and assistant town manager/HR director. And some of the other things are just about the position. It became vacant on May 17th, 2024, due to a retirement. The position received a considerable amount of applicants due to the minimum requirements of the position and the ease of implying via Indeed. Of the applications received, 11 were extended interviews. Of those 11, eight accepted interviews. An offer was made at the end of July, and it was declined. Another offer was made at the end of September, and was also declined at the end of October. Robin was interviewed, and an offer was made and accepted. So are there any questions for Carter?
No.
Nope.
All right. Is there a motion?
Move that we ratify the interim town manager's appointment of Robin Nano as the administrative assistant for the Board of Assessors.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Back to you, Carter, for the interim town manager report.
So on the projects, the library exterior paint project was completed and on budget. We do await the final punch list from the Director of Facilities. We did issue a notice of award for the DPW garage flooring. They're getting their last items together for us, and we expect to be able to execute that at the beginning of next week. The notice of award has also been issued for the DPW partial roof replacement project. They also have a few items, payment and performance bond, and we expect to be able to execute that contract this week. We did complete the paperwork for the sewer manhole rehabilitation project, and the vendor has been in contact with the DPW director to begin to identify manholes which they can hopefully get done before winter sets in, and then pick it up in the spring. The data collection services contract also was executed, and the principal assessor is preparing to give them a list of properties for their inspection. Library 18 room bids were due yesterday. We got four bids. They were within budget. About, we had $120,000. The bid was 85. There was an ad alternate for 11. So we're checking references and concluding the paperwork on that. Municipal building design did receive their proposals. I don't know what happened last night, but once we receive that report, we can now open the price proposal tomorrow. The town hall roof replacement and chimney restoration came in roughly $25,000 above budget. We initially thought we could cover it within the capital funds, but they are from two different years. And also, I'm a little uncomfortable because they're for two different items. So we do have an under run there, and then we never quite know what's going to happen once you start opening a roof up until it's done. I spoke with Adam Costa on the Mass Avenue, and I hope we can get that out in the next week or so. And the PAC manager is finishing up the audio updates here on this building. We do have Ritter Building. Two projects are going out to bid tomorrow. One package is for the roof and trim. The other package is for the windows. We know we don't have sufficient monies, but we are getting those packages out to bid, and we'll see what happens. So unfortunately, the recruitment, the staffing's a little bit of one step forward. You just filled one position for us, and we thank you. Unfortunately, we learned today, this morning, that one of our police officers is moving back to their family in Vermont. So we will be advertising to create a pool of applicants. That ad will say that the pool is for the coming six months, so that if we have another resignation in two months or three months, we'll have a pool of candidates. We will hope for lateral transfers. Obviously, we'll send folks to the academy should we need to. These police positions are becoming more difficult to fill as Vietnam-era and other folks of my vintage are starting to retire. The PAC videographer remains available, and if you're watching this meeting and wonder what's behind it all, reach out, and perhaps you might be interested in working with them. I'm pleased to tell you that of the three positions that we do have vacant, DPW Labor Driver, Sewer Business Manager, and Assistant to the Sewer Business Manager all have interviews this week. Please light a candle, say a prayer, whatever your particular faith is, because then that would really help bring to closure some of the vacancies we've had. The boards and committee vacancies, I hope folks that, you know, get a chance to read that letter in the town meeting warrant booklet about the import of volunteers to running the community, and you'll see some of that in action from the Finance Committee and other committees that present Municipal Building Design, Budget Task Force, Planning Board perhaps. You'll get to see some of that in action if you can join us next Tuesday evening at the special town meeting. Speaking of which, we have a star amongst us. The Chair joined me to tape Talk of the Town. We did a half-hour preview, walked through each of the warrant articles for PAC, and if you have a chance to watch that, it actually did bring up a question on the mart. You know, can we go to Worcester? So I don't know. They did agree to go to Emerson, but we'll have that conversation with them and try to get that done by next Tuesday night. I participated in the team meeting on Marshall Park. We've got some unfortunate news about that when we talk about the ARPA monies. Spent quite a bit of time on the status of various ARPA items. We did work with Maya, and we received quotes. They are our health insurance carrier. We received quotes for two additional high deductible insurance plans. We'll review them in a team meeting next week and then decide how to move forward on that. I will say that a good portion of the time, probably 10 to 12 hours, not necessarily my time personally, but of staff time, was spent on public records requests last week. I'm pleased to tell you that Ms. Bellevue achieved her recertification for MCPPO designation, so that has been renewed. I did attend a portion of the capital planning last night via Zoom, so I could observe the IT presentation, and then I sat in on the balance of the Budget Task Force.
Cool. Any questions for Carter? All right. Awesome. Thank you very much, Carter. All right. So moving on to old business. The first thing is status update, discussion, and possible action are the ARPA funds. So as Carter mentioned, he was in a meeting today and found out that Parks is going to return approximately $750,000 of ARPA funding. And that's sort of all we know about right now, but it looks like we're definitely having a sizable amount of funds that we're going to have to reallocate. But Carter has put together a list of emergency items that we can purchase, and got a good amount from our department heads. So we have stuff from police, fire, DPW, and schools. As we know, Kate Burnham came in. So I'll just sort of go over what this is too, so we have on this list. So police is asking for $45,000 in body cameras. Fire Department is asking for $74,000 for a power stretcher and loader.
I'm sorry. Do we have this?
This? No. This is not typed up. It's summarized in one of the letters that Carter provided for us. So before the meeting, I sat down with him to actually get the specifics for each request. Like I said, this came in today, so it's not actually in a spreadsheet, but I will put it in one and send it out to you guys immediately, so that it can be in front of us for the...
So it's in the letter, and you're saying you're just reading kind of this paragraph?
Yes. I'm breaking it down for you guys with the actual requests. So the $45,000 for police is for body cameras. The Fire Department has three requests. So 74K for a power stretcher and loader, 50K to replace 15 portable radios, and 23K for a stair chair. DPW has a pretty long list. So there's $4,720 for a gas-powered cement mixer, $10,800 for a 2.5 CY, don't know what that means, loader bucket, $11,500 for a tailgate cross-conveyor, $72,500 for a mini excavator, $14,700 for a trailer for a mini excavator, $1,1452 for a JCB 3CX compact backhoe, $194,000 for a catch basin cleaner truck, $275,000 for a John Deere 544-wheel loader, $198,500 for a John Deere 410 backhoe. And then the school list is $59,920 for the 911 cabling. One, oh, this one has a weird comma. So I'm assuming it's $15,400 for the generator at the primary school, $64,780 for the pickup truck with plow, $33,250 for the middle high school window safety film. This is another comma era. So I don't know if it's $48,483,000 for the primary school classroom mini splits, phase two.
I think both of those, Mr. Chair, are with an added zero at the end.
Yeah.
So the generator's $154,000, and...
This one's $483,000. Yeah. Yeah, most likely.
The 911 cabling project was completed.
So the explanation that I was getting from the superintendent before this meeting, and I don't know if this is 100% accurate, but my takeaway was that they initially were planning on going in, and because each room has a PA system in it, but they don't have a telephone hookup, that they were going to go off of that PA system. And then when they actually got in, they discovered that they couldn't do that. So it's something like that. So I would assume that that's why this is listed. I didn't read the description here, but it's something along the lines of that.
It was completed. I guess we'll figure out tomorrow.
Right. But that's the explanation I got. So I think that's the status, and it's my understanding that they have it ready to go for that amount.
If I can jump in. I think part of it as well is that, you know, it's a project that we know is already completed, and it's, so if we're in the position where we're looking for things that will qualify for ARPA, which this does, you know, that we could then assign this to ARPA, the effect would be that it would create additional budget capacity within the school budget. So it would allow us then to ensure that, hey, if we're making this designation again, we know the product's done. We know what's going to be done before the end of the year, because it's already done. So it's a safe project.
Yeah, and I'll just press pause real quick before I continue reading through the school department requests. There are other ways we could do that too, like Carter was suggesting, that we could potentially put ARPA funds into pavement management, and then they would just have a lot of excess money in the budget that could then be moved somewhere else. So there are options, other than just funding projects on this list of things that we can do to make sure that we don't at least lose it. So we could put it towards like budget items like that, and then there would be, you know, an overflow of money that would then be transferred elsewhere in the budget. So I'll continue reading this, and then I'll let Carter speak to it as well. So the next one is $81,710 for the Turkey Hill Elementary School vestibule, $384,000 for the fire alarm projects. All right. So Carter, do you want to add anything?
Well, first, I am not anticipating any decisions tonight. Secondly, I didn't know until mid-afternoon how much we were really looking at turning back. I knew it was considerable. I'm not even comfortable with the number yet, because when I read through the design proposals, there are things that were not included, no public meetings. Test pits needed to be performed, but there was no time set aside to observe the test pit. Those kinds of things. So I will attend the Parks Commission meeting tomorrow night and try to get a better handle on the number, but I do think it's safe at this point to say you're looking at a $700,000 plus or minus turnback. Finance Director is here to speak to the switch in projects I want to make you aware of, and what we are hoping. And I've had some other questions about, you know, different kinds of projects. What I'd like to do is to get an understanding from this board that we would allot ARPA monies to the current capital projects that might be underfunded. This building, for instance. It's an $85,000 roof, and that's before they get here and they start opening things up. So I'd like to have the flexibility, for instance, on the library. It looks like it's going to be $33,000 under. Got to get the final bill, get the check, the punch list, and the like. I'd like to have the flexibility to move that. I don't know the exact dollars right now, and frankly, I wouldn't be able to wait for a board vote on an exact amount of money. So doing that, I can then put all the balance of these items onto a spreadsheet and give you the... All the cut sheets I received and everything. We can get that scanned out in the next day or so. I have told people that I'm uncomfortable with paying for a project that has already been completed. I don't think that's in the spirit of the legislation. I'm also told people that I am uncomfortable with any project that has to go out to bid. I just, by the time you get it in the central register, you get it advertised, you leave it out there for a while, and even if you don't get a bid challenge, if you get a bid challenge, there's a 45-day window right there. By the time you get the performance bonds, and you get this certificate and that certificate, it's three weeks in general to get these things all signed, locked, and sealed. So when I went to the department heads, I asked them for equipment. Equipment that was on a state bid list, where they could get a quotation from the vendor, and upon your approval, all we'd have to do would be to sign. So I would like to ask Ezekiel to speak to you for a few moments on the Harper's payroll project, a different direction. I think he would now like to go in. I would like to get an understanding that any projects that are over and under, I can balance those out, keep you informed of what they are, and then put together all of these spreadsheets and the remaining cost estimate I've been asked for on another item. And we do have two safety valves. If you did nothing with this, over. Safety valve number one is you pay the $470,000 for the two six-wheel trucks that you're receiving in December. Then, depending upon the goodwill of the Capital Planning Committee and the annual town meeting in the spring, you reallocate those dollars to other capital projects. Safety valve number one. Safety valve number two, you have $600,000, is my understanding, in your budget for pavement management. Use ARPA money. You're already under contract. You need only issue the task order for next year under the terms of that contract. Issue a task order, and then the money that you do not spend out of the general fund, you can return it to free cash. You can tackle any of these projects. It buys you six months. PR challenge, for those at town meeting who voted for tax money to be spent on the roads, will they understand the accounting transactions that we're doing? They'll still get $600,000 with the roads, but they'd get it in a different way. We also have a little bit of contingency. Izzy's chasing this down for me. In one state, the ruling was that all the interest earned on your ARPA money had to go to the general fund. We've been of the understanding that here in Massachusetts, we can retain it, continue to use it, it's part of the program. to use it, it's part of the program, but not subject to the rules. Izzy's partway there, one more step to double-check it, but that we think is an additional safety valve, because if you have to issue a change order on a construction project after December thirty-one, I'm not convinced that would be ARPA-eligible, because the base amount of the contract is what was committed. The contingency is that wild card of who knows. So if you go in one of these other directions with pavement managed money, or the interest, we can cover that. We do have the Ritter Building coming in, and those two packages on December four. I can't guesstimate right now, and we have a review we might hear about tonight from the Municipal Building Design Committee, but I don't know the number on that either. So, before we get into a discussion, would it be okay if Izzy addresses this?
Yep, I was just, I was gonna wait for you to finish, then I was gonna invite him up, so that we can hear about what he wants to do with his ARPA project.
It's intimidating, being in front of everybody.
Don't be intimidated.
No, it's all right, I just, I had to say it. All right, so we have the hundred thousand allocated to payroll services, to move those services away from Munis and into a service, payroll service provider. That's ninety-two thousand for the actual payroll service provider, plus sixteen thousand for consulting. With that being said, I, on October twenty-eighth, I had began, actually, let me back up a little bit, I had started a Munis user group with the power users throughout the town. On October twenty-eighth, we held our second meeting, and with that being said, I had mentioned the changeover in payroll software and the potential ERP system change to another company. The users were not happy. They were not aware, even though we've mentioned this in meetings, in open meeting, they were not aware of these potential changes, and they were asking questions as, well, ninety-nine percent of our issues is because we have Munis server onsite. How come we're not moving to the cloud? Has that been discussed? Is that an option? So, you know, I reminded them that in February, I just came in. So, the history with Tyler and the town is a lack of support, and they were in disagreement with me. With that being said, they have asked me to explore moving to the cloud where Tyler has software as a service, where they maintain all the infrastructure, the updates, the support, training, and project changeover. So the quote I received when I requested, that was for year one, one hundred twenty-six thousand three thirteen, for year one. And I can send this as supplemental email to Carter.
Say the number again.
So, for year one, so the, it involves two charges. Hundred twenty thousand, two ninety-eight for, that's a recurring annual. Sixty, six thousand and fifteen dollars for the one-time setup and implementation. So for year one, it's a hundred twenty-six thousand three thirteen. For, that includes everything within Munis that we already have, however, it's over on the cloud, they're responsible for all the updates, and things like that. In addition to that, the Munis user discussion, part of the discussion is, our current Munis package, we're paying for the payroll ERP system self-service. So, I had asked, how come this hasn't been implemented in the past? The issue has been the server. Every time they started to implement, there's been a blockage, and it's, you know, with the departments that were testing, it was not feasible. So, moving to the cloud, I have been advised by the users, who have been at other towns, stating that they have Munis self-service, it works beautifully, the time reporting, the scheduling, the, everything they need out of the system, is also IRS reporting, state reporting and all of that, is seamless. It's, the issue is our server. I, I'm hearing that the server we purchased was already used, it was not a brand-new server, that's part of the issue as well. So when you're trying to re-purpose a server like that, there are issues, and it's already been aging as of the date of the purchase. So I come to you, on behalf of the users, to consider reallocating the hundred thousand previously allocated for the payroll services, and implementing the Munis user upgrade, Munis upgrade to the cloud, per the users' request.
Okay.
I would like to add that I differ a bit. I do not believe that the Munis support is equal to, or superior to, that which a in-state vendor can provide. That said, we have to make sure we are working with our stakeholders, they feel very strongly about this, and I'm hoping this doesn't turn out to be an "I told you so," but I would support the Finance Director's recommendation on the basis of we have to take our stakeholders and our users seriously, and I think that we have known for some time that the server was the main issue. Before we can even deploy the cloud, we have another thirty-some patches that have to be installed, which will get done in time. So I would encourage you to support, even though it sounds like maybe I'm not, I do think we have to take our stakeholders seriously, and they, Izzy came in to see me afterwards, and it was sort of like, you know, wow, where did that come from? But I applaud him for putting his users groups together and for taking them seriously.
All right, I'll open it up to questions while you're here.
Sure.
Are there any questions from the board?
So, all these stakeholders, this users group is internal to town?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. I was under the impression, maybe wrongly, that it was the stakeholders who were complaining most about Munis, and it wasn't working.
That was my impression also. Again, I just arrived at town in February, and I will tell you...
Right, but you've been living with it for ten months.
Yeah, I will tell you firsthand, every single issue I have come across has been the server. Tyler has been responsive to me in particular. I can't speak for everybody that's been putting in tickets, but I will say, within twenty-four hours, they do call me. I'm busy, so I don't necessarily return the message right away, but they do follow up, and they make sure that the tickets are closed. That's my personal experience with Tyler. And I asked them, you know, where have you been? You know, I did address that, you know. We're in November, you know, I have allocated these funds, this is not information I was holding, you know. We were talking about moving payroll, we were talking in the open. It's just, it seems like they didn't feel like they were asked previously. That's what they've responded to.
So when we had the Chair of the Sewer Commission saying that once again, they weren't able to get sewer bills out.
Server.
I was on lots of those emails and those threads.
I was as well.
Unless you can point me to one, I don't remember them ever, them being Tyler, ever saying it was the server. Never. Now, and I'm gonna characterize this, and you tell me if I got the right characterization, okay? I will start by saying, I'm gonna support what you asked for, okay? That's gonna be the first, most important thing. But I will point out, as someone in this industry, first of all, if you replace the server, it wouldn't cost anywhere near a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, and so that's a simple enough fix, okay? But, we paid them support, they know the whole year and probably year and two months now of problems we were having, and that we're gonna pay them with that history of support, that you are very well aware of, as the prior town manager was, as prior employees were. We're gonna pay them more money than what our payroll option was to begin with, meaning we're gonna lock in with Munis, which we talked about possibly replacing, and we're gonna pay them more money with the same company, because something in the cloud is magical, and that the software that runs in the cloud runs seamlessly, whereas the software they run on their, on servers doesn't. Do I have that characterized right?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
So, a couple of things. Let me start with, help me understand, Munis does more than payroll.
Correct.
Are we talking about moving all of Munis to the cloud? I've only heard payroll so far, but...
Correct. So, we already pay for the payroll package within the, so the Munis is the all-encompassing ERP system. We have our counting, our payroll processing is done, our tax billing is done, our budgeting is done, everything is done, through Munis.
Right.
It's just, there's specific modules that we pay for, we're not using. So, for example, the self-service, employee self-service, put in the timesheets, things like that. So, if we, let's say we go with the other option, we continue with the payroll service provider, and we search for another ERP system, the combination of the two will most likely be the same cost, 'cause you still need an ERP system for the finances, for the billing purposes, for the sewer billing, real estate tax billing, motor vehicle, and what have you. So, I'll use Carter's term, one thing, half a dozen another, I don't know exactly how it goes, but the costs, I believe, looking at the numbers, will be the same if we have payroll service provider and an ERP system, or Munis.
Let me, they're not apples and apples. The cost is, my decision wouldn't be a cost decision alone. I mean, cost obviously plays a factor. But, for at least the last nine months, I have heard incessantly about how awful Tyler technology was to deal with. Now, you obviously have a different take, maybe you have the magic voice, maybe, I don't know what's going on, but that's not what we heard for nine months, at least, and it was already going on for three months before that. That's what I'm relying on. And like, if we can't rely on the company who writes the software, I don't care where it's housed, whether it's on, an onsite, on-prem server, or a cloud server, it's still their software. And no one ever pointed to me and said, hey, we should get a new server, 'cause a server's just a piece of hardware. It's easy enough to get. They're a dime a dozen, and you can get one for, you know, a couple of tens of thousands of dollars, and it'll last five to seven years.
See, everything I heard, the issues were with patches and upgrades and doing big jumps and then having to patch in between, because it was a big jump. I never heard a hardware issue, so can I...
Well, that essentially is the same thing. Well, I'll just say, like, the issue is how our server is set up. We had a huge gap from a very older version to a new one. All those patches may not have been applied properly, some of them are still missing, so our setup of the software on our own server is the real issue. So if we ran it in the cloud on a setup that is perfectly fine and normal, then we wouldn't run into those issues, but it has to actually be managed properly, so, you know, that's the issue right there. I can see moving to the cloud resolving some of these issues, I'm not one hundred percent confident that's the case, though.
I think, can I jump in?
Mm-hmm.
I was very involved with Munis when I was still an employee here, and I understand it did get a little bit better, but do you have anyone from your user group that's doing billing? Because the major issues that, for the last nine months that have been coming up were with billing. I think most of the stakeholders now aren't doing billing, they're mostly probably billing and doing invoicing and whatnot, I'm not sure if there's anyone that's doing bills that was a part of this conversation, 'cause my understanding is...
We did have the Treasurer, she's part of the user group.
Does she do sewer billing? Does anyone do sewer billing?
Not the utility billing, but she is doing the...
But that was where the major issue was.
Helping out with the real estate billing. So, the issue with the sewer billing, I mean, my understanding, through the hundreds of emails, is, okay, there's an issue. You contact Tyler, put in a ticket. Okay. However, as a user, we don't have access to the server. So, Tyler calls me, I have to contact our sewer IT, they're not available, or when they are, I have to go back to Tyler, and they may not be available. Sometimes I'll get a call from Tyler, you know, I'll call Tyler saying, you know, I have sewer here with me, we can let you into the server. They're helping other people at the same time. So by the time they call me back, maybe an hour or two later, our IT, sewer, will be another site somewhere else, they may not be available. So, it's a catch-22, so you're running in circles, trying to institute a patch, do a fix. And the utility billing, I mean, the issue at hand, looking back, we had a consultant come in to help with the sewer utility billing, as well as with the real estate tax billing. So, he actually used to work for Munis, so he knew the background. So when he was implementing the fix, he would send, you know, he would send me an email, this is what you asked Munis to do. However, they would say back, you have to do these patches, the fix is already there.
Yeah.
When we go to do the patches, sewer IT has to do the patches, and you're doing the circle, and it's a waste of everybody's time and money, you know. By the time you actually institute a patch, I mean, we had a meeting last week to get us to the newest version. You know, we instituted a patch in the test environment, everybody has tested, weekend has passed, there were some glitches, they were supposed to do another test, another patch upon the previous patch and test, in order to institute, it's just this catch-22, and it's just, I think, the users are, at the end of the day, it's tired.
Yeah, so...
They're tired. So, and also, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I had talked to a lot of other communities, and they did say their experience with Munis has mostly gone away. We're one of the few communities, because we are on the server, having these issues.
So I have a lot of thoughts about this issue. I am in support of what you're proposing in Concord, where I work now, which I bring up regularly. We have a cloud-based Munis, and we don't, I mean, obviously there are still some issues, but we don't have any of the issues like we had here in Lunenburg. From the very beginning, when I was still a user here, we were talking about the server, I feel like I'm really loud, that it was an issue. And we had several meetings, and we were being told by sewer that that wasn't the issue, and that it was done correctly. So, it wasn't, and I think that is a big problem, that we were being told something that simply wasn't true, in my opinion. The server was never set up properly to do what it was supposed to do, which was compounded by the fact that we went, we jumped all of those issues, and the patches haven't been done, and we don't have internal staff, we don't have, I believe we still don't have a network administrator, we don't have anyone doing these things. So I don't think, even if we were to buy a new server, we don't have the staff or the support to maintain it, ourselves personally. So whether it is, excuse me, staying with Munis and Tyler and going cloud-based or going a different, a different way, I still think going cloud is likely the way, I'm not in the industry like my colleagues are, but likely the way most of these things are trending anyway. So I am in support, but I do think it's an issue that we need to address with the IT process, and the fact that that was not handled.
Can I finish? So SaaS, I understand the SaaS model, that's popular, I mean, that, I assume the contract will have that we'll be on, maintain on the latest version, all of that. My concern is with Tyler's support, their track record. And then, the migration to the cloud, which would be, I would think, they would keep it, you know, we'd be moving to the latest version, how would that, how would that go? And then, my other question too is, does the school use Munis?
Yes.
And are they included in your user group? Okay. So, and, so there would be no more on-prem Munis? It would all be moved to the cloud, correct?
Correct.
All, whatever modules we have? So do you know anything about how the plan to migrate?
Along with the quote, they... Um, along with the quote, they did provide me with our implementation plan, with a checklist, who's responsible for what, and the timelines for each, and I could provide that to you as well. I'm not, I'm IT savvy, but I'm not a tech person, per se.
I think the town has a lot of IT problems, which I witnessed last night during my capital planning IT presentation myself. I wouldn't be moving sensitive material to the cloud, but that's me being in the industry, but I know everybody does it, but that's why we hear data breaches all the time. So, that's fine. But, as I said at the beginning of my comments, so I wouldn't support it myself, but this is on you. If you tell me that you support it, then I'm not going to vote against it, it's, but it's going to be yours.
Michael Wright, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's... Sure. Um, you know, personally frustrating, and I'm speaking to my colleagues, personally frustrating that we heard from Paula in front of us several times complaining about this issue, asking us to do something, and after nine months of, and then we had a meeting, and we sat at the table right behind our finance director for almost two hours, speaking with personnel, you know, and I think in that meeting, we learned that we were 11 upgrades behind, that we were in 2023 or four at the time, 24, I think that was this year.
Uh, 2021.
And that we were 11 upgrades behind. And it's like, that's a no-brainer of what the actual underlying, so, I mean, my, it's frustrating when staff present a problem and the personnel we have to manage do not adequately address the problem. And I'm not speaking to you, I'm, again, I'm speaking to my colleagues here, that's frustrating. Because that is an expectation, you know, and I think that what, what the finance director is doing is something that should have been done a year ago, which is to talk to all the user groups and say, who else is having this problem, let's team a solution. You know, we, we had a group in town, a bylaw committee, or a group that was focused on technology in town, and at the suggestion of the town manager, we got rid of it, and nothing was created to replicate it. And so, it sounds like what you're doing is replicating it. And what you're, what you're identifying is that on our 12-year-old server or so, that it's not able to manage the 2024 technology, which I think we all are aware that technology improves, basically doubles in, in capacity. I think that was the thing every 18 months or so. Anyway, so it's personally frustrating that we've lost a sewer business manager, we've lost an assistant sewer business manager, and all the work that goes with it, we've lost our IT person due to a failure to manage, essentially. So, I, you know, when I think about the cost you just proposed, you know, I had it written down, if I remember correctly, we're paying 60 grand a year already for this, for the system, and so this is doubling. But when I think about staff time for the learning curve, how much do we lose in terms of staff learning a new system, what does that cost us? I would assume it's more than 60 grand. So, bottom line is, it's, it's just frustrating to be in Groundhog's Day here with recurring issues with the management of personnel and systems. I'm really grateful that you're taking a good lead on this, and I support your request.
Yeah, I get all that frustration, but at the same time, if we can move to the cloud and that solves the issues that we're having with maintaining our own server, and people can still use a platform that's familiar with them without those issues, then, you know, that is a good path forward to me. Even though I'm not happy with how much it costs just to move the same service to the cloud, you know, it is what it is, and there's nothing we can do about that, so...
Um, I did want to add one more thing. So, I did say to the users, if I am standing in front of the select board, I need a focus group to support and help me advocate for this change, because I can't be the only one here. I do have volunteers, I can, I can pull together a presentation for you if need be, if, if you would like for possibly, not special town meeting, but for the one after, I can have them pull something together for you, and, so you get your eyes on it and your hands on it.
Yeah. I think you can definitely work with Carter to at least have, like, information in, like, a document format for us, especially when we go into the meeting that we're going to have the schedule for next week to deal with all of the ARPA reallocations. So, if we can have that for next week, that'd probably be beneficial. Carter, was there anything you wanted to add?
The only thing I wanted to add is that had we gone with Harper's and the other likely vendor, both are in the cloud, the other vendor no longer will provide you their software on your server. And I can see a day in the not-too-distant future when Munis gives you that same option, the cloud or nothing. I'm not crazy about the $50,000 increase in the budget that we will face immediately next year, plus the retiree health insurance, and, you know, another salary issue. We're looking at 350 plus or minus right out of the gate to stare down, so, um, I share some of Mr. Alonso's frustrations, I think. Theoretically, we will no longer be responsible for doing our own patches. Theoretically, every time we hit the, the cloud, their server, everything will work right. The only thing I can guarantee is whatever software you have, someone will have a complaint about it, because...
I hope they have security backups that we can do onsite as safety precautions and not rely on them solely for backups.
Well, I'm assuming you can export the data and just maintain your backups, right?
Well, presume, but I don't want to presume anything. I would, I would presume that a software company would support their software, so, I would have presumed that last year, too.
Well, and that's the issue with maintaining your own server, you know, it really does take off some of the accountability on their part. Yeah, they're there to provide support, but they're not the ones actually maintaining it and pushing out their updates on the cloud. And it's part of the reason why maintaining your own server is such an outdated model. You know, you never see that anymore, everything's on the cloud, so...
Not everything, though.
Well, I'm also a software...
I've been doing it my whole life, believe me, there's no trick, and there's no shortage of people. We have bad IT people.
We offer both on-prem and...
Internally, we had a great IT person, got left because we outsourced the rest of IT, which we shouldn't be doing, but that's another issue.
All right. So, Ezekiel, was there anything else you wanted to add tonight?
Um, that was it for the...
All right, any remaining questions?
Just one, just one last comment, just one last question. So, we're paying them 60-some-odd thousand dollars a year now. The recurring cost going forward annually after the initial move is 120, so we're doubling it. Okay.
The first-year costs, depending on when we implement the, the change, will be prorated as well.
Okay. But I mean, it, but that's what the difference is going to be. It's going to be from 64 to like 125 or something like that.
No, it's 60 to 120.
60, okay.
The 120, the 126, it's additional six for the support for the change.
Renee, you had a question?
Yeah, Ezekiel, do you know the timeline, once you were to say, okay, go, what would be the timeline to be functional in the cloud, to have everything?
Um, I do not, I can get that.
Okay.
I'll edit tomorrow's here.
All right. Michael Wright, you had a question?
Um, thinking about the budgetary impact of another 60 grand of the budget for software, could we enter into a contract or an agreement that allows us to prepay two years?
I could ask.
Where'd you get a discount for a multi-year contract?
I was going to say, right, exactly, the first thing I thought of. If you're going to get multi-year, you should get a discount.
Okay.
Amanda, did you have anything else? No?
No, no, not that needs to come up tonight.
All right. All right, well, it looks like we'll get, you know, just a write-up from you guys on this, just so we have a little more information, but other than that, thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Don't leave yet, though.
Oh, okay.
P. Carter.
Sticking around for something else, you'll be in the, in the wing?
Thank you.
All right, cool. All right, so we have a long list of emergency things that we can fund, we just heard of another one or another action that we have to take. I will add all of the things that we had today, the police fire DPW and the school requests into an ARPA spreadsheet, familiar to what we've done in the past, and I'll send it out to you like in the morning, just so you can guys have it in front of you. But we're definitely going to have to schedule a meeting next week so that we can vote on all of this. So, I guess we can talk about that now. We could meet probably before town meeting, if we want to do that, or we can meet another day that week, depending on availability. So, what do you guys think?
What are we doing at that point?
Realocating the upwards of $750,000 of ARPA funding? Or continuing to discuss ARPA since we're not meeting next week? I think with this going on, it's very difficult to not meet in one week.
Unless the board is violently against the two major safety valves, which are paying for the six-wheelers and using the road program as a flex point, I do think we could wait till the 19th, as long as we have some general sense of direction for the next few weeks. For instance, I'm hearing general support for the reprogramming, the finance directors. But fourth, I've asked for your understanding on moving dollars from projects that are under to capital projects that are over. So, I think that if we at least have those pieces, we can, we can wait till the 19th so the board can take in more of the material and, and let it percolate a little bit longer, unless you are just absolutely against those two safety valves. Because if you are, then my timeline in terms of need of decisions really does change.
I'm not violently opposed. I don't like the word violently, but I am opposed to the safety valves. I think that they're a good idea, but I think, you know, when we, you know, when this board allocated, you know, a million dollars to the Parks Commission, and I want to be clear about my position here, when we allocated a million dollars to the Park Commission, part of that, and I believe it was Selectman Alonso that asked for it, was to see a phased plan of, to, that way, we had somewhat of a guarantee that these funds would be expended within the timeline. And so, I think it begs the question to the Parks Commissioners, who I am eager to see and meet with, of why weren't the funds expended? I mean, this wasn't, these funds were awarded, you know, quite some time ago. And so, you know, returning 750 grand, I mean, you know, it's not lost on me that at the same time, we have a warrant that there, that is likely going to be passed over, but it's for 5.2 million dollars on the same, on the same project. So, I think, I would like to hear an explanation, an answer on what occurred, and again, not to point fingers, but to get it, and is the money that remains going to be spent for the purpose that it was initially given for, which was to construct? So, I want to get clarification on what these remaining monies are being used for, but the spirit of it was to create, to commit a million dollars to something that would benefit children, something that would benefit seniors, and something that would benefit everyone in between. And so, if we're going to reallocate that, those funds, I would like to see a significant portion of it given to things that support children and seniors and everyone in between. And I understand that $475 for a DPW truck does do that, but they already have the money for that. And so, I would be looking at this school list and saying, you know, 911 cabling, creating opportunities for classrooms to call 911, support it. You know, a generator, I can support it. Um, you know, window safety film, I can support it. Primary classroom mini splits, I can support it. Turkey Hill Elementary School vestibule, fire alarm, I can support it all. And that, you know, this is more than 750,000, but I'd much rather see the money go to products that are on the state bid list, ready to go, that more similarly match the intent that I had when the funds were, were allocated. So, I, I would like for us to at least have that discussion, and I don't know if tonight's a night, I, I mean, I want to be real, I mean, everyone's, I'm sure, a bit anxious here to get home and see kind of what some results are tonight. So, I don't know how seriously we can have this discussion today, but to answer your question to the chair, I can be available next Monday, I can be available next Thursday, and I can be available next Tuesday.
Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday?
Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday.
Okay. How about everyone else? Because we, I'm sorry, but I would be a lot more comfortable with this situation if we had a meeting scheduled for next week, so, that's just me.
I can't meet before special town meeting.
Okay. I figured that would be difficult, so...
Yeah, I can't do Tuesday.
Okay.
I could do Monday or Thursday.
Monday or Thursday?
What is, what are those two dates?
We can't do Monday, you're correct, that's a holiday.
Oh.
Thursday.
Oh, is it? Okay. So, that's the 11th anyway, so next Thursday is the 14th?
I'm trying to remember, I have a, I have a town, a town manager screening committee meeting, and now I can't, off the top of my head, remember when, I think, let me look...
Is it posted yet? Do you want me to pull the calendar?
I'm sure it's posted, that's what I'm going to look at now.
All right. I might be able to get there faster, because I'm on the laptop.
I'm usually hot.
So, the town manager screening committee, I don't think it's posted yet, I don't see it.
But from the last one, what time do they normally get to, can you see the time?
Oh, is that?
Yeah.
Uh, let's see. Town manager screening committee, last minute, 6:30 on October 7th. I thought you guys met on Wednesdays.
We meet on Wednesdays or Wednesdays, depending, because of the composition of our...
Well, next Monday's a holiday anyway, so I wouldn't be able to be next Monday.
Were we looking at the 14th?
So, probably the 14th. Are you guys available on Thursday, the 14th?
I prefer not to leave meet on a Thursday.
Yeah.
I could meet at 6:30. I have a Minnesota Building Design Committee meeting at 5:30, but it should be...
On Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay.
It should be a less than an hour meeting.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Alonso, not meeting too late. So, if we can kind of put a hard stop on the other end of it, that would work well.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, it's a very clear workshop, we know exactly what we have to discuss and figure out, so...
Tom, do you think you could hard stop at 7:30?
Like I said, I'd prefer not to do it on Thursday, but if that's the only time anybody else can make it, sure, why not? I'd love to meet with you guys.
Did we rule out Wednesday?
What?
Is Wednesday not an option?
Uh, I didn't say that, Wednesday, I personally think it's going to be very hard to meet after coming off of town meeting on a Tuesday night that can go super late, you know, but if we all want to do two days, that could be a little lengthy then.
Yeah. Well, it's up to whatever, it's up to whatever you guys are available on, Wednesday or Thursday, I'll make it work, so...
I can find a way on Wednesday if we need to.
I, I think I can do, let me double-check, I think I can do Wednesday or Thursday.
You can do Wednesday or Thursday? Amanda and Tom, how about you?
I can do Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay. Do you guys have a preference? What about you, Tom, Thursday? You said Tom.
Wednesdays would be better.
Wednesday would be better? All right, so we just want to say Wednesday then?
I'll make it work.
The town manager screening committee, that was the only pending question, right?
Well, that's the what? So, that's the 6th, the 13th?
Yeah.
Maybe the next week, I, I wish I had...
There's timber.
I don't have it on my thing, yeah.
Is, um, what time are you thinking?
That's what I was just going to ask. Do you guys want to meet a little earlier instead of doing 7? It sounds like you do.
I prefer to meet earlier.
Okay.
But I can't do any earlier than 6.
Yeah, 6 is the earliest I can do.
Okay. How, do you want to do 6:30? Give you guys some time to come in?
I would do 6.
Six?
6 is fine.
All right. So, we'll do Wednesday at 6 o'clock?
Can you, is 6:30 better?
Yeah.
Or 7? Whatever.
I'll, I'll do it.
Six?
I'll figure out my schedule.
Renee, did you say you'll do 6?
On which day?
Wednesday?
Yes.
All right, cool. All right, thank you, guys.
Now, in response to the answer from town manager's question, I don't have any problem with the truck. I have, not a problem, I have a question about whether the paving would fit ARPA, and I'd love to get a town council recommendation, because what you suggested is putting it in there and anything we don't use kind of flows down to free cash, looks completely suspect of going around the whole idea of ARPA to begin with. And I would, I don't want to be, again, my point from months and months and months ago, back in June, is that I don't want to lose any of this if we can help it. So, any of these projects, I don't, it doesn't matter to me, the, the whole spirit of the ARPA was never an issue with me, once it was opened up that we could use it to anything, as long as we use it, because I'm telling you, we've already heard from the end of town manager with the health insurance rates, and I know what's coming up on the capital plan and all the things coming up, we cannot lose any of this money, otherwise it falls to the backs of the taxpayers.
Yeah, I don't really care about the spirit of the bill as it was initially proposed in whatever, 2020 or 2021 now, since we're at the 11th hour, but I'm pretty sure that[1795.03] But I'm pretty sure that pretty much whatever we want to do with it is okay at this point.
So I, two, maybe three questions for the interim town manager. One, if we can have for next week, the balance? And how much of is interest versus the remaining?
We might not have October's interests. But we could probably give you.
Being able to separate out what, in case you said the interest, we may be able to hold on to and spend after as, as kind of our contingency.
That's, that's our understanding, we're halfway there with DOR. I think Izzy had one more contact.
This is about a, a request from our DOR director regarding the interest.
So knowing what our non-interest balance is.
Yeah.
Just so I'm aware, it is correct that the interest, regardless of where it falls, we do not lose the interest. The only thing, it goes to the, the general fund or potentially stays under our control under the same ARPA distribution rules.
That's.
Those are the only two options we're looking at. We do not lose the interest, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
And that's our understanding. We would just feel a little more comfortable having been exposed to another state where it swept to the general fund, if someone at DOR sent us a, yep, you are spot on, that is exactly the right. You're looking at this exactly right.
And is there a chance for any more money to come back?
Yes.
He just said like the.
Yeah.
Library project maybe.
Oh, that was looking to go to maybe cover an overs.
I, I, I don't have a price yet on the municipal building design committee.
So that could be over or under still.
Yeah, that's a big one, that could be a big one.
Yeah. Do you know when we'll find out?
Yeah, so I believe tomorrow. So I need to give Julie the scoring sheet that we came up with last night. We did it during the meeting. And then once we provide that to her and identify that the bid was qualified, which it is, then she can open the scoring sheet. I mean, I, for my own, in my opinion, if we get a bid for more than $225,000 for what we're looking to do, don't hire. And that is entirely too much money. So that's my opinion. So I am fully confident that, that, you know, anyone that's in this space is going to give a, a bid that's within the budget. And if it's above the budget, it's just too much money. It's not worth it.
All right.
And I just want to be clear, it's not just getting a number that's a good number. I still have to get all these people under contract.
Yeah.
And things do go wrong. So yes, these numbers, these numbers will fluctuate.
So we'll definitely have a better idea, at least on that one, for next week.
There will be no fluctuation as great as the one.
Yeah, the one that we're dealing with right now.
Well, I too would like to know what the other $250,000 remaining of the ARPA that we, we gave to the parks is going to be used for.
Yeah, that's a question I have as well, so.
That will be.
We can get that answer by next week.
I'll have a better handle on that tomorrow night. We have their proposal. I'm frankly not completely comfortable with it. I've described a couple of items, public presentations, observing test pits.
Yeah.
There are other elements that I think are missing from the proposal. But I'll be at that meeting tomorrow night, and hopefully that will provide me with more information.
At the risk of, at the risk of this spilt milk argument, this is not a position we should be in. This all should have been done by September. And some of us argued to push hard to get this done, and we kept going out and out, and here we are, the first week in November, with a week off the end of the year because no one's going to meet at Christmas to do this. So we have one month now, and now it looks like we have over a million dollars of $3 million that we had, what, three years, four years to spend? It is absolutely irresponsible that we're in the position. If we can pull this off, it'll be America, America.
I don't know if we were even, I, while I agree with you in part, Tom, I don't, I don't even know if we were talking about the parks back then. I thought we were under the impression then that this was locked in and good to go. But I do agree generally that this million dollar surprise, to me, is the surprise. Because I thought we had asked this question, I thought we got an answer that it was good to go, and then I asked for follow-up, for confirmation that it was good to go, and that was when I thought we got the response that we're not good to go. But I do agree broadly with Mr. Alonso's sentiment that, you know, you know, preventable, predictable situation.
I have opinions, but I will save them in another format.
I, I just want to say with all due respect, you've seen the number of bids we've pushed out in the last couple of weeks. That, that was quite a bit of work. And I would like the staff who pushed those out, I wish they'd been pushed out a lot earlier. I wish I didn't have to be as pushy.
I, I should be clear, by the way, and none of this reflects on you. I think you have, along with the staff, have pushed out a lot of this. I'm just saying that, you know, and I'm not even looking, at this point, it's, it's, that's why I started with the spilled milk thing. I mean, the point is, we are where we are. But I'm, I'm talking about this board putting more fire under, under people in the summer where we should have been pushing more of this, but everybody's like, we had time, we had time, we had time. And it turns out, we didn't have time. So, you know.
I, I do believe, I've mentioned to several of you, and I will have mentioned it to the recruiter, on that project management skills are probably one of the most important things you can look at in your next town management.
I guess I'm just curious, if, if you're pointing this at this board, Tom, what exactly do you think we should have done? Do you think we should have reallocated the million dollars that we allocated for Marshall Park?
I'm not, first of all, I didn't point at the million dollars. That's a new thing for all of us. But there's a lot of other money beside that, this, this probably, what, $400,000, $500,000 aside from that? Like that we could have, you know, we could have gotten projects and bids and made decisions on much earlier. This is coming as a surprise. And again, I don't want to dissect it, and, and I want to be clear, because I watched the Parks Commission meeting, like their last meeting, I understand the hard work they put in, okay? So I'm not looking to blame anybody, but, but giving people a heads up and hoping for the best when it comes to the end, there had to be a time earlier that there was the inkling that this wasn't going to happen. So there's a little bit of that. But anyway, that's the surprise. But even the money aside from that 750, there was still a big chunk of money that we should have pushed for to get allocated more quickly.
Yeah, and based on what I've been told in conversations that I've had, it seems like it goes way back. So, I don't know why a lot of things didn't get under contract, no idea.
So I have, one, I'm hearing support for what the finance director's proposing. I'm looking to find out if I have support and flexibility for projects that are under to reallocate that to projects that are over.
Certainly this building.
So that I can go ahead, so I can go ahead with this contract here, because I don't have money in hand. I, I couldn't sign that contract tomorrow, even if it was ready.
Yeah, so that'll definitely be top of the list, that was 25,000, you said?
Well, I mean, are, are you asking us, because I mean, we're talking 25,000, right, for the roof here? I mean, i- isn't that kind of a decision we can make right now?
I'm, I'm asking for flexibility, that if after, if that library, which is 99, if we go with the alternate, comes in at 124, I'm asking for an understanding tonight, frankly, that if the DPW floor comes in four under, I can just move the money. I don't have time to wait for formal votes for each of these. I would advise you immediately if we were going to, but I'd like to try to take these construction projects and view them as more of a package. So that if I'm under 15 on one and over 12 on another, I can just let you know what we've done and move it.
So, and, and I.
Well, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Ross, here.
I, I think what you're, what you're also saying is that for the staff, that this kind of gives them some tasks as well to bring all this stuff under contract between now and next week, because next week may very well be a flood.
Well, I, I think the staff are all quite aware of my expectations of getting this stuff under contract.
I, I would have no problem with that with, with a cap. So I would say that if we're going to pass a motion, I would say that we could give the interim town manager ability to do that up to 15, $20,000.
I'd like to have 50, because I got 25 on the roof alone.
Yeah.
50, five zero?
Five zero.
Five zero.
I, I, not in total, I mean, in any one move.
Oh, okay.
So if, if you're saying, hey, I got 15 here and I need 15 here, you can do that. But anything that go, or I, I'll even raise it to 25. But if any, any one single transaction is over 25, I'd like the board to be involved.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I could support that, sure.
Yeah, I'm okay with authorizing that tonight as well. So where would that come from? Are we going to?
We still have extra funds.
Please don't do that to me.
So I think what you're asking for is 20, is, is what Tom just said, and I'll make the motion that I move to authorize the town manager to move around in one transaction up to 25,000 for a total not to exceed 50,000 to ensure that the projects already previously approved by the select board and the capital plan can move forward.
I can live with that.
Second?
Sure.
Do we?
All right. So I think that that gives you authorization then to move 20, up to 25 for any one transaction to $50,000 in total.
In total.
And it's for all the products previously approved that you've gotten bids on, as well as any of the capital things that you needed additional funds for.
And this is to, this is just to clarity for the motion, this is a reallocation, not allocation of unallocated funds.
No, it's internal relocations.
I just wanted that to be clear on, on the video here.
I, I would not do anything new.
That was the question I was getting at, so, thanks, yeah.
And you seconding that?
No.
Renee's seconded.
I have a question though. Do we have to have the 50,000 cap? Is that enough? So if, right, right off the bat, if we know you're going to have 25 for the roof? If you have two more that is.
I'll, I'll be right back here. I need the board to feel comfortable with the flexibility that it's giving me. I'm okay at this, at this point. We'll certainly keep you informed every step of the way.
I'm with you. I mean, I did not expect the cap. Like I said, the cap itself was immaterial to me, as long as no transaction went above 25K. Singly, if there were five 25,000 moves, I'm like, I'm fine with it.
So I will amend the motion to remove the 50,000 cap.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Actually, he amended it, so this person who seconded it.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously. All right, so you have that flexibility now.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
For that vote and that confidence, and we will keep you informed every step of the way.
Yep, so it sounds like we're going to get a lot more information too going into next Wednesday, so we will have that to potentially reallocate all of the 750 plus or minus $1,000. That looks like we need to reallocate. All right, any other discussion on ARPA tonight?
Uh, yes. You know, one of the release valves that I do want to just advertise that I do support, and it was kind of noted, well, no, no, it wasn't fully noted, that was something else, is, you know, this, these funds can be given as a one-time payment to staff. That was something that was in the legislation, and, and I just want to state that I am totally okay with that. That we find ourselves in a position and there's enough time to get a payroll through, and we're talking, you know, some money that I think giving staff who will never again see a one-time check coming to them, even if it is for, you know, 100 bucks or a couple hundred that I.
Yeah, so, this is something that I was advocating for, and I didn't bring it up tonight because we weren't able to get the actual numbers for an actual proposal. But it is something that Carter's looking into and something that I am going to actually propose next week when we have those numbers. But we are thinking about, because this is a very easy way to get this money out. It'll take, I'm told, one business day to process it. And the eligibility that we were sort of discussing, Carter and I, was if you were under the employment of the town while there was the emergency declaration for COVID, and you're still under the employ of the town, then you would benefit, or you would qualify for a one-time bonus for that.
Let's like call it a bonus.
One-time payment.
COVID payment.
Emergency payment.
COVID payment.
Emergency preparedness payment, or something of that nature.
So it was my intention to include that when we really started going through and deciding what we're going to pay for, but since you brought it up, but.
Hey, thanks for doing all that legwork.
Yeah, no problem, but we're still going to crunch the numbers to figure out how many people are included, how much we could potentially set aside for it, et cetera. All right, any other discussion on COVID? I mean, ARPA, ARPA.
COVID and ARPA are two phrases I really don't think any of us want to have to.
Hear anymore after December? All right, hearing none, let's move on. Discussion on special town meeting. So the first thing that we have to do is review the language of Article 1. We have that language for the motion now for where that money is going to go to. So I'll read it. So the motion is, I move to raise and appropriate the additional sum of $125,000 and no cents as follows. To line 13A, salary reserve, the sum of 17,500. To line 6, group health insurance for a total increase of $125,000 in the amount raised and appropriated under Article 7 of the May 4, 2024 annual town meeting. So Carter, do you want to speak to where you want to put this money?
Izzy calculated when the salary reserve was created to pay retro FY '24 and prospectively FY '25. It was underestimated by about 18,500, give or take. I have an affinity for round numbers, so I picked 17,500. Our retiree health insurance came in ranging from 10.6% at the lowest end, where we have the fewest people enrolled, to a little over 20%. We used a melded 17.5% across, and I think the figure was actually on the order of $300,000 plus or minus that this will impact the budget. So we took the 125 minus the 17,500, and simple math, 107,500. If there are other places you would like to allocate it, this is your, your judgment call. It's just what we're proposing based upon what we are looking at. Is that a fair summation, Izzy?
So this article that you read is in this document, right?
Which document are you looking at?
STM motion discussion document.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Okay, is that where you read it from? Because it doesn't have the 107.
No. No, I read it from a different document. So what were you, where does it have, the 107? I read the actual motion, so maybe this is a different draft.
I think Tom's saying STM motion discussion, right?
Yes, I'm, hold on. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of 17,500. Looks the exact same to me.
Line number 6, group health insurance doesn't have a number. It needs the sum of.
Yeah.
We were still plugging this together.
Oh.
Some of these things have come at the very last minute.
What am I missing?
It looks exactly the same as the one I read, so I didn't read anything that's not listed here that's in this document.
What do we, so what?
We're looking at the document entitled STM motion discussion.
All right, so what I heard Carter just say, and this is why I'm confused too, I heard Carter just say $107,000, but what I'm seeing here is $125,000
Yeah.
to line 13A salary reserve, the sum of 17,500, and to line 6, group health insurance for the total increase of 125,000.
So you should have a memorandum called STM motion discussion.
Let me do the math real quick.
If you look at the.
The amount for line 6 is missing.
But, but line. There's a math error, there's a math error. It's 107,500, not 125,000.
After the 17,500, what it says is, and to line number 6, group health insurance. Then there's nothing, and then it says for a total increase, so are we missing that 107?
We're missing the 107.
We are missing the 107.
And 107.
That's what I'm confused.
Line 6 amount is missing, there's only one amount.
All right.
We're talking a lot about numbers and a lot about dollar amounts.
Big numbers.
And I, I want to say this with the most utmost delicacy, but to the school thing had errors that we didn't know what the number was. We didn't know where, if the comma was wrong on the number. These are big numbers, it makes a whole lot of difference if it's 115,400 or 154,000. And in this, I mean, these are articles with hundreds, thousands of dollars. We need to be accurate on these things. So we really need to do a better job of doing this. So, anyway, I, I'm assuming that it says, and to line number six, group health insurance, the sum of one hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars. That's what it should say.
But I'm still confused on, on...
No, cause then the math doesn't add up, it shouldn't be that much money.
It's one twenty-five minus seventeen five.
Right.
What else?
We're gonna distribute a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars by putting seventeen thousand five hundred in one line item and a hundred and seven thousand five hundred in another line item.
That's what I understand.
Those two add up to one twenty-five.
But what's so confusing is the retiree insurance note on the same thing that says we're three hundred thousand.
We're not covering that increase, we're just putting the money we have.
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it. All right.
Go ahead, Carter.
Mr. Alonso's completely right, and I have to suggest to you that going into your annual town meeting, or a special town meeting, the last action, whether it's your votes or the finance committee's public hearing, has to come at least twenty-five days before the meeting. There simply isn't time to do this at this kind of pace, particularly if you have illness in the office or anything goes wrong.
I agree.
You know, our town clerk, the post office first wouldn't take our check. You know, our town clerk finally went down there, and as you all know, she does not take no for an answer. And, and really pulled our fat out of the fire. But I suggest to whoever is here in the spring, twenty-five days is the minimum to get it all right, and ideally you'd have thirty.
Yeah, especially for an annual town meeting, one hundred percent.
Yeah.
So let's go through this article again and figure out exactly what we need to add and where. So it's, I move to raise and appropriate the additional sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars as follows. All right, so to line thirteen A, salary reserve, the sum of seventeen thousand five hundred, to line number six, group health insurance, and then something has to be added here.
The sum of one hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars.
One hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars for a total increase of one hundred and twenty-five thousand in the amount raised and appropriated under Article Seven. Does that sound right to you, Carter?
It does.
All right. So we'll definitely need to update the motion paper that we have here to include that. Are we in a position to vote to recommend tonight with that change made, or do we wanna hold off?
I'm fine with it, I'm glad I asked this article to be put in.
Yeah, especially now that we have those numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm fine with it as well.
All right, cool. Is there a motion?
A move that we approve the language of Article One as read.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously. Article One, the select board recommends approval, five zero. All right. Any other discussion on town meeting that we wanna have tonight? No? Carter, is there anything else you wanted to cover on town meeting?
Uh, no.
No? All right, cool.
I appreciate the momentous effort by all. I know that a lot went into this year with the interim town manager, so I just wanna comment on that, and...
Yeah.
It is, it is always frustrating when things, you know, aren't correct, but I think it is, you know, certainly, you know, not to deserve us all the efforts that have gotten us to this point.
Yeah, Carter, Annie, our executive assistant, the town clerk, and probably other people that I'm not naming right now, really deserve a lot of credit because we ran into issues at every single point in this process. There was about a day and a half where the file of the booklet was locked, and no one can open it to edit it, which was gonna be the day before it needed to get mailed out. That had to be resolved by IT. There was issues with the post office not wanting to accept our check and wanting us to pay for it in a different way, and then saying that they couldn't fulfill our request, and, you know, we had to come up with backup plans to get it mailed out. And fortunately, it all worked out, and we were able to resolve all those issues each step of the way, but it was a significant undertaking, Annie worked overtime last week to really help get it out the door, so thank you for the hard work and the effort that went into getting all of them out. All right. Let's move on to current business. We have review and discussion for the draft of proposed purchasing credit card policy. I didn't have a chance to read through the draft yet, so Carter, I'll pass it over to you to introduce it.
I'm gonna pass it on to our finance director.
All right, that sounds good to me, come on up.
The only thing I will say is that this addresses issues that we heard in the listening sessions with respect to both initially being able to pay for items and then get reimbursed in a timely manner.
Um, I don't have a draft of the policy, draft policy in front of me, but I've worked with several organizations with a P-card policy. This is not out of the ordinary for a town to have. So the draft itself is for, you know, to support the town for supplemental expenses such as travel, lodging, signing and paying for trainings, post office mailing as well. You know, it's just those incidental purchases. So, um, we've authorized, not authorized, we've aligned spending limits to departments with town manager approval as well as oversight by the select board. It's really all I have. It's, um, really, the, the reins will be really tight. It's one card for the town, it's not, each department head would have one. It would be centralized, and the town manager's office central purchasing would be the card holder. So essentially, it would work how the town's working now. If somebody has to order through Amazon, they put in the request, ensure there's funds in their budget. It would get approved, then the purchase would be made. Copy of the receipt then would go to finance, and month end, we would reconcile and pay the credit card bill.
So it's only one, would the card need to be present?
It would be the card holder. So let's say I have a training. I would make the request, send over the registration link to, I'm assuming whoever the town manager's office is gonna be in charge of the card. They go in with my login credentials, pay for the training, send the receipt over to the department head and to finance.
And how's it do, how's it done now?
Everybody's paying for their own and getting reimbursed.
Doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist.
Right.
Well, the people are paying for travel, I'm assuming, and the login.
On the login credit cards.
Right, okay.
If you have, you know, a training or a conference, you know, in advance, sometimes, you know, you can do a purchase order.
Just saying, without this policy, people are putting on their personal one and then asking for reimbursement.
Correct.
And how quickly do we reimburse people?
It's depending on when we get the paperwork, it's the next warrant, it's the accounts payable warrant. So within this draft also, we suggested a change, moving it from the accounts payable to payroll, so it'd be within the next paycheck.
Oh, okay. Which now is in three weeks.
Although the current process, um, is you pay for it, you provide them a copy of your credit card with the last four exposed, which is the one that are most commonly used for identifying you. You then await your credit card bill, and you blackout everything except the items you paid for, and then you submit it for reimbursement. It is...
So you're not giving receipts?
It...
But we do need receipts as well.
And you produce the receipts from the registration. It is cumbersome at best. So the idea is to put it more on a straight reimbursement. You know, I paid for this, here's the registration, and the department puts through the voucher for payment.
I'm, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm completely in support of this. This is something that many people in town over my tenure there have been advocating for, and it just, we didn't have support of our previous finance team. But it does, I, I did have a chance to review this ahead of time. It looks like it, it does align with, you know, MGL and, and thirty B, as well as there's a whole thing they have on their website about how municipalities can use procurement guards, and it looks like this aligns, and it's even more strict with the accountability of the checks and balances that you have listed and the spending limits and the prohibited usage, especially just having one card, where most, many towns have more than one card. So I'm fully in support of, of implementing this. I think it's long overdue.
Yeah. You know, I wanna, I wanna be respectful to our process here, and since this is being presented tonight, that, you know, we might need another meeting to vote on it. But I, I wanna ask about why one card? Like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a scenario, scenarios that the town manager is at a conference, the conference is in Vermont, and she has the card physically with her. That means that everyone else can't use it, right? So I, it may be, I understand the strict controls. It may be advantageous to have more than one card. That's my opinion. But I fully support the policy in full. This comes up all the time. And, you know, everyone has different, is of different economic means, and so sometimes asking someone to front this, you know, for things that they need to do for the, for the performance of their jobs sometimes is a barrier, and so this kinda releases those barriers.
Yeah, I fully support it. I'll have to do a more thorough read-through, we're reading through it now. I mean, would the policy prevent you from purchasing too, if you guys wanted to? Cause I don't see anything in here. It does say...
It says one procurement fee.
Send one card, we can, at any point in time, we can amend the policy.
Of course, yeah.
But that was Carter's suggestion to, to begin.
That's, that's cause of one of my mayors who bought gas for himself when he was at a conference, you know.
Yeah.
I, I would encourage you to keep it at one to start with. I mean, it's intended for you to buy the airplane ticket if you need one. Pay your conference fee ahead of time. Pay your first night's hotel reservation. It's, and, and many of the folks who are going to these kinds of events are of a higher income level and can. Under this new system, you know, now, this could be done within two weeks. And if you're at the conference on Thursday and Friday, you submit it on Monday, depending upon, that's a payroll week.
You're talking about reimbursement now.
Yeah, reimbursement. You'll have it in your paycheck that Friday. No more separate checks, this will be part of your paycheck.
I thought this was supposed to take the place of reimbursement.
So there's two separate things, so the re...
I, I haven't read this. This wasn't, this, this only got put in our packet today.
So I think the conversation is aligning to, we have the employer reimbursement procedure and the P-card policy. So the P-card policy will, you know, do the, everything that we spoke about earlier. The reimbursement policy, we still have reimbursements for mileage. You know, someone's driving. We still have reimbursements, you know, there would be one-offs here and there, but we're trying to streamline that as well in concurrent with this.
Yeah, I didn't read the reimbursement procedure yet.
I will have a question only cause it came up right away as I'm looking at this, is that somebody's gonna have to do the overhead of making sure that departments don't go over these limits, so is that gonna pose a problem?
Uh, I don't believe so, no. It'd be under my oversight, really. It'd be under my oversight, really.
I understand that, that's why I'm asking you.
So I don't think it would be a problem.
Okay.
All right, are there any other questions?
I will have to read it thoroughly again.
Yeah.
Didn't appear until today, so...
Right, yeah. No, and I saw a typo as well, it looks like, or maybe someone accidentally hit backspace and removed a zero under fire department, but anyway, thank you for coming in. So we'll need to review it a little more, read through it, and yeah, thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
All right, any other discussion on this, or are we good for tonight? All right. Moving on, I have these, we'll address them after town meeting, discussion on annual climate survey policy and select board town manager goal-setting process, so we'll really start picking that up after town meeting. Minutes, I don't believe we, do we have any minutes tonight?
No.
No, I didn't see any in there. Okay, good. Warrants, I don't believe we have any warrants either tonight. All right. Action items.
Do have one, just as a follow-up. I had asked several weeks ago about, from our HR and assistant town manager about, you know, the, the current state of departments and everything, and just wanted to check where that is and...
We're, we're gonna have to get you a revised timeline on that. The ARPA push has really put that off, but I will have that meeting with her tomorrow and get you a revised timeline on that, we all need that.
Thank you.
Any other action items? Committee reports.
Budget task force met last night. We had our principal assessor and chair of board of assessors there to discuss split tax rate and single tax rate and the impact and all the ins and outs of, of that. And then we reviewed some of the, the points that Izzy and Tony will present at special town meeting. And school committee, as we heard, is meeting tomorrow night. That's it.
Capital planning met last night. We heard the reports or the presentations from IT, from FIRE, and from DPW. All chock full with the usual, you know, projects from each of those vehicles from DPW and, and lots of drainage and, and infrastructure projects from DPW, cemetery, from FIRE, the usual vehicle rotation that went out, you know, ten years. And IT was very light on projects. I think next year was the only project they had something for, which was a bit surprising for me. So then our next meetings, we're now, we've heard from all the departments, and we will now, at our next meeting, which is I think in two weeks, we'll start prioritizing them and discussing them, and probably early December, do our final prioritization and ranking and submission of that prioritized list to the interim town manager.
I don't have any.
I have two. Municipal building design committee met last night, and we had approximately, I think, four companies perform sidewalks. Over twenty people were interested. We received one proposal prior to the deadline and one after the deadline that couldn't be considered. The municipal building design, last night, we went over the proposal. We identified, we looked at the minimum qualifications as identified in the RFP. We confirmed that the proposal met those minimum qualifications, and then we walked through the rating sheet. And generally, we rated the proposal that we received as acceptable and advantageous. And the, the rating scheme was unacceptable, acceptable, advantageous, highly advantageous. There were several things that were in the highly advantageous column, but overall, I think it was in the acceptable and advantageous column that we had created. Based on the schedule, we are looking to conduct an interview on the eighteenth. As noted, I need to provide that scoring sheet to Julie, then she can go ahead and open the, the bids, and then we'll have, or the, the price proposals, which are separate, and then we'll know how those pricing, what the pricing came in at. I am expecting it to be below the two twenty-five. And then, let's see, I just had some notes here. The proposal indicated that they could comply with the schedule that we presented, which is basically having everything wrapped up in a presentation to the select board on February the fourth. And so, and they did demonstrate experience with similar projects and with historic projects. I will note that I spoke with Joe, our PEC, director and coordinator. There apparently was an issue with the recording into the cloud last night, and only two seconds made it out of the one hour and forty-five minute meeting. So we will ensure that the minutes get approved in a timely manner, and we did last night approve, I think, four sets of minutes. The other thing is student initiative. So I met with high school, middle school civics teachers, the principal, and I believe it was a curriculum specialist. I, I apologize for not catching her title. And so we discussed better ways that we can support students during their community projects. And so as a reminder, you know, we do the one day in the schools in February, March time period, where we briefly just talk about kinda how the select board operates, how town government operates. And what was mentioned in this meeting, it was about an hour, what was mentioned in this meeting was that one thing that would be helpful is to increase exposure in the eighth grade to some of the functions of government. An idea that was thrown out there was, you know, if we had like a fifteen to twenty-minute presentation template for, for department heads, that, you know, if they could kinda set aside fifteen to twenty minutes, five times a year, that it would allow kind of exposure in eighth grade as they're talking about in eighth grade civics, kinda how local government, state government, and federal government works, that at least they have that, that touch point, and that would go well with the, the discussion that we have with, with the students in the spring. Another thing that was mentioned was when it comes to the student projects on the tenth grade level, high school level, is some of the things that were thrown around was kinda talking and engaging with elected boards and appointed boards to compile ideas of things that we think a student project could be helpful on, and then kinda funneling those ideas to the, the high school civics teacher, and then potentially having like a board fair in which, you know, similar to like a job fair, but a board fair in which we have elected and appointed officials available with like different tables, so that way the students who are doing their products can then engage members of those different boards. So certainly more to talk about, this is the initial kinda thing, there's more things to iron out, but I thought it was a very helpful, healthy and productive conversation.
Cool. And I do not have a committee report tonight.
So I have a question about committee reports, and I just wondered if anybody was gonna comment on it, but I... going to comment on it, but I will comment on it. So I watched the Parks Commission meeting last week, and do we, do we have an official?
No, they're elected, so we don't have a liaison to. Well, actually, no, that's not true.
Everything's elected.
Sorry, those just came out of my mind.
We just don't have one.
No.
Okay. The reason I bring this up, because not once, because I wanted to hear what was going on with the ARPA funds, but twice during the meeting, the chair, when talking about their warrant article, said that she had spoken with our chair and who said that we would support the article if they put it in annual town meeting, and then we would be supportive of it if it was an exclusion question, as opposed to a raise and just borrow question. And I was wondering, why would she say that? Why would she, did you have such a conversation with her?
I did, but I never spoke for the board. I spoke for myself.
Okay. Well, she presented it like the board would support it.
Okay.
So we have to be very careful.
Yeah, I know, and I was, because I know better than to do that. You know, it's my personal position that if we take on any debt, it needs to be excludable, not regular debt. I communicated that, and I don't know if it was communicated in a way other than how I initially communicated it, then, you know, it wasn't my intention to say anything for the board as a whole.
Just wanted to know, because I guess she said it not once, but two different parts of the meeting, the same exact thing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Maybe we need a liaison. Is that what you're suggesting?
Oh, no, that wasn't my point. I just, I don't know why there would be, it's these kind of things that, that these kind of miscommunications, wherever that happened, that set out bad precedent, because if she's telling her elected commission that this board would do it because she's getting it from the chair, and if that's not accurate, then their commission has the wrong impression, and that's not good. I don't want people to, you know, take things for granted one way or another that aren't true. That's all.
Right. Yeah, I didn't watch the last one, but, you know, I'd say it's incorrect to speak on the whole board like that. It's not a reflection of how I actually said in that conversation, so.
That's why I wanted to ask.
Yeah, no, it's fair to bring that up. Like I said, I didn't watch it, but if I did, I probably would have said something. So, yeah. All right, upcoming meetings. Next Tuesday, special town meeting. Then we're meeting on the following Wednesday, November thirteenth at six PM, and then November nineteenth. Public comments. Are there any public comments from the interim town manager?
None, Mr. Chair.
Any public comments from the public? Seeing no public, are there any public comments from the board?
Nope.
All right, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. It is eight fifty-two PM, and the Select Board is adjourned. To everyone at home who tuned in and watched our meeting tonight, thank you. I know that there are probably other things on the television tonight that may or may not be more interesting to you than our meeting, so thank you for tuning in if you did, and I hope you all have a wonderful week, and we'll see you next Tuesday at special town meeting.